For roll call, Michael Bullier.
Michael Bullier, Hebrew.
Michael Sharon.
Michael Sharon, Hebrew.
Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, Hebrew.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Kirsten Erlinson, Andover.
Pam Farrington.
Pam Farrington, Marlboro.
Carrie Farolino.
Carrie Farolino, Marlboro.
Drew Galpin.
Drew Galpin, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebrew.
Amy Romanchuk.
Amy Romanchuk, Marlboro.
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet, Andover.
Heather Summer. Brianna Otipoku. Samantha Maxwell.
From the Ram Middle School.
And Olive Sarash from high school. Alright, and everybody round to the pledge of allegiance. Perfect, so that takes us to public comments. Hebrew, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Ed public meetings is welcome. The public comment section of the meeting agenda is set aside so the board may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the board is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the board is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. Is there anyone present that'd like to have a comment? Okay, anyone online? Hearing none, okay, perfect. Next, we have the add slash delete agenda items.
I'll move it, we added in item 10.7, discussion and possible actions on a food service inter-school agreement with Marlboro schools to the current agenda under new and unfinished business.
Seconded through. Any discussion? Hearing none, on favor?
Aye.
Against? Laxane passes unanimous. And the student work report?
I guess I'll start us off. Welcome, everybody, to March. We finally have our shades open. We can see outside. Today wasn't a very nice day, however, it has been nice and festive. I'm very excited about it. I love warm weather. I love being warm. Just, I want to get out of winter, guys. So, we're getting there. I'm very happy about that. So, some things on the agenda for March. So, we have our trivia night, Ram trivia night Thursday. I'm going to be participating this year. I'm very excited. You're looking at the future winner, so, you know. We also had last week our blood drive. That was very successful, as it always is. I'm very happy, you know, Ram is a part of that. Last two things, we have our Jekka field trip, and we had our kids versus basketball cops basketball game. That's all I have.
We also have the SATs coming up tomorrow, and then the seniors have their portfolio reviews, makeups. For anybody that missed them, and...
A little louder, please.
Sorry. Yeah, really, not much going on for March, so...
For Ram Middle School, we had our student-led conferences earlier, and all students had to prepare a slideshow to show their parents their progress in school so far. Students either showed their parents at home or at an in-person conference at school. Matilda the Musical was also this weekend for the middle school and the high school. The Ram Players Club did an amazing job, and their hard work definitely paid off. Also, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. To celebrate, Ram Middle School is having a spirit week this week, and today was Green Day. In upcoming news, all students have smarter balance testing coming up soon. John, everybody is very thrilled about, to say the least. Also, any middle school band, chorus, jazz students who auditioned and are accepted into the Eastern Regional Festival are having their concert this Saturday, March 22nd. We have put in a lot of work to prepare for this concert, and are very excited to show off our skills. Thank you.
Thank you all. The Board of Ed chair report, I don't have anything additional to report, so I'll turn it over to Colin.
So, thank you. Yes, Happy St. Patrick's Day, indeed. Best holiday of the year, in my opinion, as an Irishman, and also Happy Almost Spring. I agree with you, Oliver. I'm super excited. When I leave work and it's not pitch blackout, that's always an exciting thing for, to be happy about, so it's great. What I also want to start with, with regards to the reporter, the superintendent, is March is also Board of Education Appreciation Month. And I wanted to take this as an opportunity on behalf of the faculty and staff and the students to thank our Board of Education members, our Student Board of Education members, for representing their respective talents or for their respective schools. The contributions that you all make often go unseen, but I certainly know, as I work with all of you very closely, that a lot of the great things that happen here in Region 8 are a result of support that you provide to the district and to students and staff. So, what we put together, just so everybody can see it, is at their place, everybody should have just a notepad, Regional School District Day Board of Education notepad, and then there is also a notebook that we had personalized stickers made up with a Ram logo, so those are for all the board members, and for those board members that are either not here or attending remotely, we will make sure, thank you, that we get those tokens of our appreciation sent out to you in the coming days. Just to piggyback on something that was already mentioned, we did have a blood drive last Thursday. We had our medical career students here a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago. Kathy Green and her medical career students do a fantastic job just to put some information or specific data. They collected 85 pints of blood over the course of the day, and 21 of those individuals were first-time donors, which is a pretty cool thing. I think I've said this before, the first time I ever donated blood, which I've been doing for years and years and years and years, was actually when I was a high school senior. So, hopefully, those 21 students or adults who donated for the first time, it will hopefully not be their last. I also want to congratulate the Ram Math High School, the Ram High School math team for the successful 24-25 season. The team finished third overall in the Greater Middlesex County Math League, and the junior varsity team finished second overall out of 10 different teams in their league, so certainly a wonderful accomplishment. And finally, I also want to congratulate the cast, crew, and faculty advisors of the Ram Players Club. I was able to attend the opening night of the show, which was on Thursday night, and there were also shows on Friday night and Saturday night. I think that we had some tired cast members on Sunday who probably slept quite a bit, because it was a long show, and it was really, really well done. It's just another great example of the hard work, dedication, and talents that our students have, and I appreciate their work to provide such an outstanding and entertaining show to the school community. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Next, we have the student program spotlight.
So, I'll just start this off as well. The board knows, I've said it often in these meetings, that Unified Sports, Unified Theater, it's one of my favorite events to go to, that I get the opportunity to go to, and so I was thinking the other week that it would be wonderful to highlight the Unified Program, and I talked to Mr. Trudeau, our athletic director, to talk specifically about Unified Sports, and he has brought some students with him to talk a little bit about their participation and our coaches as well and advisors, so I appreciate everybody being here for this, and I'll turn it over to have Mr. Trudeau start us off.
Thank you. Why don't we have all of the students and coaches, too, that are here? You can kind of just come up and surround me at the podium. On behalf of all these student athletes and coaches, you know, thank you for taking tonight and taking this opportunity to recognize this great athletic program and athletic team that we offer for the high school and the middle school. You know, piggybacking off of what Dr. McNamara said, this is personally one of my favorite athletic programs and sports, and two teams that we offer here at Ram that I get to oversee and frankly, I just get to enjoy. Aaron, I'll let you change the slides. I'm not really going to read off the slides, but I think our slide presentation has a lot of great pictures with a lot of smiles in it that I think capture what Unified's all about. But you might be asking, what is Unified Sports? Unified Sports is a program that is affiliated directly with Special Olympics and the Special Olympics organization. It started way back in the 90s, and Ram has been a founding member as far as I know, you know, for as long as it's been offered in the state of Connecticut for interscholastic athletics. It's a sport or a group of sports that combines our student athletes, our unified student athletes, with our peer helpers of similar age groups. Aaron, you can go ahead and change it. They do compete in sort of light competitive environments, which is absolutely fantastic, because it focuses on development, skill development, important athletic development and physical development of our student athletes, and probably most importantly, social interaction and fun for these guys. But, again, they compete in a light competitive atmosphere. It is an exemplar model of what sportsmanship is and what sportsmanship should be across the board in high school athletics and middle school athletics. And personally, I wish, you know, every sport, from football to boys lacrosse to girls' basketball, all had kind of the same mentality of sportsmanship and appreciation of each other and appreciation of each other as competitors. Alright, Aaron, you can go to the last one for me. Again, I talked about it over the years. Ram has been a founding member of this program. It's light competition. We engage in traditional competition with other neighborhood high schools, area high schools. We participate in statewide tournaments for both the middle and high school, and our high school team has even participated at Mohegan Sun during the finals of state championship basketball games, which actually took place this weekend. Ram wasn't a competitor this year, but I believe the year before we were during the Northwest Catholic and Colby Cathedral state championship basketball game. So, that's just, again, a great atmosphere and a great exhibition to show off these great student athletes. We have three students who have volunteered their brave time to talk. I'm going to list them off and let them fight over who wants to go first, second, and third here. But we have Olivia Talaga from our high school team, Evelyn Lage from our high school team, and Risa Loma as a representative from our middle school team.
Hi, my name's Evelyn. I've been a part of the Unified Basketball Team for the past three years. I really enjoy being a part of this team. It's just a very non-toxic sport, and I love doing it. I think it's important, because it provides equal opportunities for those who aren't able to participate in the other sports, and it's just in a very open and inviting environment for both the peers and the players. Like, last year, we had, like, I think, like, 10 peer helpers, and this year, we had more than 20, which I think that was great, that people want to participate in this. And, yeah, it's just a very important aspect to Ram and making it more inclusive. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, I am Umiya. I am a junior at Ram High School. I have been playing Unified Basketball since somewhere. Unified Basketball is fun. My favorite part is playing with my friends, and I have met a lot of friends play basketball. I see them in my class, lunch, and in the hallways. We all to go away. I have been to Ewesmith, Ewesmith High School, Parkville High School, and Town High School. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. What's your favorite, favorite part of it?
Youth, right.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
You've always told me it's being on the bus with us.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Risa Loma. This is my first year doing Unified Basketball, and I thought it was a really cool experience, and it gave me an opportunity to spend time with my friends and also build newer friendships. I was able to help the athletes learn sportsmanship with the opposing team as well as being able to learn how to be a positive teammate to one another. One new friendship that I made this year was with Ariane, and I did not know who he was before we started playing, and now I enjoy giving him a high five in the hallways every time we see each other. Overall, this has been a very positive experience for me, and I hope to continue and do it again next year in eighth grade.
Alright, that was a great job by all three of you student athletes. Do we want to do a picture? Do we still do that? Yeah. Alright, so what we're going to do is we're going to have the student athletes and coaches kind of line up in between the tables right now, and...
Does anybody have any questions before we go? I just would be curious. So, the people that spoke did a phenomenal job. Olivia, I love the question that you answered on what was the best part. So, some of our students that came and joined us this evening that maybe didn't have a prepared presentation, what's your favorite part about Unified, besides the bus rides? You can't see Olivia's answer. Anybody else?
I really like all the new friendships, I think.
Any of other students? Come on, you drove all the way out here with mom and dad.
I think one of my highlights was when Ariane first began shooting the ball. He would shoot underhand, and by the end of our only little, little, only two months, he was shooting overhand and made his own basket.
Does anybody else have any other questions I don't want to have?
I'm curious about how a peer pairing works. Do you pair with a specific student, or is it just part of, just on the team together?
No, we're just on the team together.
Okay.
Part of the Unified, what they give us as directions is three peer helpers and two athletes on the court at any time. The peer athletes don't, the peers don't usually shoot. They usually help the kids to get to where they need to be and help them to shoot. If they're a Level 1 team that really has a lot of skills, then all of them are allowed to shoot. But they're there mainly to have friendships and to help the students that are athletes improve.
I don't know if anybody saw, but Unified Division 1 just had their first C I A C championship game. That's good.
At Mohegan Sun.
A football game.
Yes.
I have a question. Do any of you play other sports besides basketball? Do you have any favorites? Excellent.
Menos, summer.
Menos, summer.
Okay.
Well, let us do it, Olivia.
All summer.
Special Olympics.
It's from yours.
Oh, terrific.
I know your word, Lauren.
Many, yeah, many of the peer helpers do have other sports. Track, lacrosse, softball.
And Unified Sports is like a part of Special Olympics. It's just accessible during the school day or within the school building. So, a lot of kids participate in Special Olympics outside of it. And those sports vary from bowling to hornball to swimming.
Skiing. Skiing.
Oh, that's great. I ski and I play ice hockey.
I play ice hockey, too.
Yeah?
Yeah, favorite skating.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Great.
Ram also has Unified Drama, which is a similar group, but it's just a different avenue, and the middle school and high school do performance every fall.
Yeah, I've been to one of those. It was terrific, yeah.
It's very heartwarming. As a parent here for nine years now, to be involved in this program, it just, I tell all my fellow parents, if you have the time and you want to dedicate it to this program for basketball in January, February, it's truly a blessing, I really feel. It's just you see our kids in such a different light, and they shine. They can play better than a lot of people I know, myself, so it's very heartwarming. When we come home on the bus, it's just very uplifting, so...
Well, I agree with that. Board members have heard me say, it is by far, anytime there's anything related to Unified Sports, Unified Theater, it is the best part of my day, no matter what other good things happen in my day. So, it is great, and I appreciate all of you coming out here to highlight the program. And I would highly recommend, if anybody on the board has not had the opportunity to go to a game, your season's over this year, I believe, yes, so we'll get you out next year. So, it's fantastic. Let's get a pic. Could we do a quick picture, guys? We'll just maybe... Thank you, everybody. Thanks for being here, guys.
Thanks for having us.
Yep, so we'll move on to now the consent agenda.
So, there's just a couple of things on the consent agenda. One is obviously the minutes in the last regularly scheduled board meeting, and then 9.2 has a number of different policies that are coming to the board for a second reading. These came to the board, of course, in our February meeting as a first reading. I received no comments or feedback for any necessary changes, and my recommendation is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? I'll second, Gabe Marks. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Next, on to new and unfinished business.
So, the first item for new and unfinished business is a review of the indoor air quality report. I'll just set up a quick context for this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Michael Schlehofer, who is attending the meeting virtually with us this evening. The indoor air quality requirement came to fruition probably two years ago, I think, two or three years ago, where we needed to go through a, have an assessment done of our air quality. We had that done, and a report was prepared and provided to the district. The information from that report was actually already given to our facility subcommittee back in the fall, I think we did it. I can't quite remember the month, but it was present, the information was presented to the facility subcommittee. We wanted to make sure that we are compliant with the law related to this, and so the law specifically states that the information, the report needs to be shared with the board, so we're making sure that we are in compliance with legislative requirements. So, Michael is going to, there is a memo in your packet. It is enclosure 10.1. It's just highlighting the fact that the indoor air quality assessment was done, and that we are actually, already have things in motion to make sure that we are following up with the recommendations. And then Michael could provide, again, a high-level overview about what those recommendations are. Mr. Schlehofer, please.
Thank you. So, as Colin stated, this was a state mandate that we had to conduct this review. We partnered with Sustainable Energy or Engineer Solutions out of Berlin. They finalized the report, and out of the report, there's two different ones. There's one for the high school, one for the middle school. The high school report outlines the recommendations that they're looking at for is... They want install outdoor airflow control sensors in the 25 rooftop units. The next recommendation is to recalibrate or replace the demand control devices, which also handle the CO2, in seven units for the high school. And then in the middle school, again, it was outside airflow control systems, installing those in 17 of the units, and then recalibrating and replacing the demand control ventilation devices that also handle the CO2 for two units in the middle school. We're working with the engineer and actually ever-source is involved, because we're looking at possible incentives that would go along with this to help reduce the cost and save energy in the near future. And based on that, we're still developing a budget, reaching out, getting quotes, and the funding for this would be from the HVAC grant, the reimbursement we got from the media center and the weight room and the locker room project. We have about $385,000 to put towards these recommended repairs. So, of course, once we have more finalized budget numbers or proposals for this, we will definitely share that with the facility subcommittee, which can then share it with the entire board. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, the timeline on these repairs puts them and the cost into next year's budget or this year's budget?
No, so it's grant-funded, so depending on when the projects actually start, it can roll forward, because it's grant-funded.
Because it's all... So, it's the air quality grant that we received two years ago, I believe, that we're using those funds to pay for the work that they're recommending.
A couple of middle school units, we needed more work than the others. They needed some kind of sensor or something. Is there any concern about the air quality in those spaces immediately? Is there a...
No, there's no immediate, immediate threat. These are all recommendations based on budget and repairs. Any immediate issues were addressed before the report was even, even got to us. There was a unit down that was noted in one of the reports, and it was due to a power failure, so we addressed everything as the findings were being done.
Can this work be done while school's in session?
No, this is something that would take place over the summer or after hours. It's not something that can be done, well, not all of it can be done during school hours. A lot of the controls and programming can be done during school hours, but the work that has to be done physically in units or classrooms would have to be done after hours or over the summer.
Any other questions? Alright, no action needed for this. It's just simply making sure that we provided the information to the board. Michael, thank you very much. If you're going to hang on for a little bit, because we might have some questions for you and a couple of agenda items, please.
Yep.
Alright, so the next item is 10.2. It's just an update on the proposed 2025-2026 proposed administrative budget. So, this, what I'm passing out to board members now here in person is a copy of the updated spreadsheet, which shows a number of different things. It shows anticipated revenue, and overall what our entire budget is going to look like based off of adjustments that were made since the last time we came together. The budget currently is at a 2.6% increase. Obviously, that's a decrease of what it had initially been when I presented to the board in January. Thank you so much. Board members at home, if I didn't email this to you, I can make sure I get it to you tomorrow. So, we were primarily waiting... share that information with, with you all.
Just so you know, in the town, we had a charter change recently.
Yes.
Which has sped up the budget process maybe too much for our Board of Finance.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're having a hard time getting, getting stuff done.
Yeah, he had indicated that there was a tight timeline this year, so I am scheduled to present the Region 8 budget to the Hebron Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at the Douglas Memorial Library. And again, I'm, I'm really happy to be able to present to them where we currently are right now. Eva, I can certainly do our best at answering the questions you might have, but that, that's what I wanted to provide an update about.
You're saying 2.6, but on here it says 2.8.
Where?
On the top of this sheet, it's just got changed.
That's gross expenditures. It's, it's right here, Scott, it's...
Oh, okay. Yep, down there at the bottom. Yep.
Any other questions?
I do have one.
Yes, please.
The community use of buildings looks like it's going down a significant amount. Is it being used less by the community, or are we charging?
So this is a, so this, it's a great question. This is, again, of course, anticipated revenue. It's, it's, it is a bit of a guessing game, for lack of a better term. I will tell you that we ended up having to make some adjustments. In fact, the timing of your question is really good. We did have to make some adjustments with how we, how our community use of building process plays out. We actually had an individual who was a staff member, who was the, kind of the go-to person, who always was the person who was here for, really, the significant events for the community use of buildings, things like dance companies and outside for-profit companies coming in to use our building. And that person decided that they didn't want to continue to do that, which I understood because it chewed up a lot of free time for them. They were often here from, you know, Friday afternoon at 2 o'clock until Sunday night at 7 or 8 o'clock, and pretty much non-stop. And so we, we ended up having to make some adjustments, and so we wanted to just really cautiously go forward with this. I will tell you that we're booking already, but there was a period of time where we were in flux, for lack of a better term, and we weren't quite sure of how that was going to impact our, the reservations that were being made. But we do have a, we've reestablished the process. We actually have a policy related to the building use, facilities use, and we revised the policy. It'll come to you guys tonight as a first read, and we also modified our fee structure for, for our facilities use, because what, I don't think we'd updated our facilities use fee structure for approximately 10 years, maybe a little bit more. You know, and, and, you know, you're talking about labor costs being a part of that, you're talking about costs for things like air conditioning, lighting, you know, all the factors that come into play. We really, Eva and Michael did an analysis of other school districts that utilize, or I'm sorry, that allow facilities use, and, and we really tried to make sure that we were in a, kind of the sweet spot, that, that makes us still appealing, but also making sure that we're not being taken advantage of for, for the facilities that we have. And again, we can discuss that, but that's, I, we should end up in a good place.
So the tuition figure is based on the 189, 036?
So you have eight freshmen, one rollover, and two rollover students, one from Columbia, one from a different town.
Yeah, so it's 10 in all.
It's, it is, nine of them are set at the rate that we established with our Columbia partnership.
Right.
The 10th one is not from Columbia, and so we're, with that particular tuition rate, we're adhering to our policy related to our district students coming, which is they pay, they pay an increased rate. It's based off of really what is the state identified per pupil expenditure.
Okay. That's why if you divide by 10, you don't get the number.
You got it, you got it. So, you know, we, I, I, just to speak to the tuition, I'm really glad that you brought it up. I had informed the board of this in an email communication. Eight students are, eight freshman students from Columbia are, have identified Ram as their high school of choice. While I certainly would have been happy if it was a greater number than that, I'm not at all disappointed with, with eight students. I, I, this is speculation, but I think it is a well-founded speculation. I believe that as we go through this partnership and it grows, I think that we're going to see more students from, from Columbia coming to us. I think the reason it's lower than, than, you know, what I'd obviously hoped it would be, is because there's a lot of students, you know, Eo Smith has been the primary choice high school for, for Columbia students, and I think that there's some momentum that are, that's, there's two things. There's momentum if, if they don't have older siblings, and then I think if incoming freshmen have older siblings, their families are not going to want to have their kids split up, or even if those kids don't go to Eo Smith anymore, the older siblings, I think that there's just an affiliation, for lack of a better term, to, to, to Eo. But I really do believe that as we get more, I'll use the term first-generation high school students matriculating out of Columbia, I'm, I'm very optimistic that, that our, our numbers are going to grow with regards to Columbia students. I think they're going to come here and just be incredibly impressed with what we offer. We'll start seeing more, more kids choosing Ram. Any other questions? All right. Fantastic. 10.3, discussion and possible action regarding the recommended use. Okay, so, so we had a facilities and finance joint subcommittee meeting last week. Was it last week? It was on Tuesday. Goes by quick. And this was a topic, this was an agenda topic. So we have found ourselves, we're, we currently are sitting in a, in a positive net favorable position, and there were some things that were brought to the attention of the administration after the initial budget had been presented to the board back in January. Eva certainly made note of what those things were, but they were things that we said, well, these are things that we can look at getting for the 26, 27 budget. We didn't want to come to the board, present our needs, and then a week later, a month later, come back and say, hey, we need another bunch of stuff. And, and to be honest with you, these are things that, in some cases, can wait until the 26, 27 school year. However, we find ourselves in a good financial standing right now, and, and there are, it really just makes sense to us as an administrative group to say, if we find ourselves in this situation, by making some purchases with our current funds, we, we are not reducing our budget for next year, but we are essentially reducing our budget in future years. And that, I think, is a very smart and strategic way to go about using our current net favorable position. That encapsulates the majority of the things on this chart, which is on page 10.1, I'm sorry, enclosure 10.3. There's, there is one project, I would, I'll use the term project, it's not a piece of equipment, but it is a project that needed to be completed. There was a leak as a result of a drain, a toilet drain?
Like the connection behind the toilet.
Yeah, the connection behind the toilet in one of the restrooms at the high school stopped doing what it needed to do, and unfortunately, we had a pretty sizable leak that incurred about $32,000, I think $32,100 in unanticipated repair costs. So that is included in this chart. That is not something that we could have waited until next year to do. That is something that Michael has actually, the, the work's already being done, and, and so that is something that wasn't an additional thing for years later. It was just something that we needed to respond to, obviously, in, in real time. But the remaining things on the list on enclosure 10.3, again, are things that we're, we're recommending we utilize current funding for as well. If there are any questions, we could do our best to, to answer them. Michael's here, and, and between Michael and Eva and I, and obviously, we, you know, Mike and Drew can speak to this as well, because they were part of the meeting.
Right. I mean, the bathroom was big because it was a back-to-back facility, right?
Right. So it's two bathrooms, yes, so two bathrooms connected by two toilets, and unfortunately, it was leaking in the walls, so that's why no one really saw it.
So a little bit of abatement that had to occur, and then, of course, all the walls need replaced in tile, dextures.
I have some questions about, someone, sink mixing valves, 40, 45 of them for $77,000.
So I'll, I'll start, and then if I misrepresent anything, I'll ask Michael Schlehouffer. It's a big price tag, and I think you would indicate in your email, you know, why can't we just get these things? Each sink is about $7,500, each sink. So this isn't a traditional sink that you might have at a home vanity. This is a, you know, it is controlled by a motion monitor, so the, the sinks have a significant cost to them. And so this is really proactive maintenance because of the fact that they're no longer making the parts that we would need to repair the mixing valves that we have, so we have to replace everything. So, and that's $7,500 per sink, plus the cost to actually, the labor cost to install the sinks. By getting the new equipment that we're recommending into $77,000 price tag, that's actually something that we could do the work internally. We actually have the capability, our maintainers can actually switch those parts out. So this is coming at a significant savings of, of what it would be in a scenario where we're looking to replace. Michael, did I get...
Michael actually negotiated down the price. It was $86,000.
Michael, did I get that pretty, pretty correct?
Spot on.
Thank you, sir. It doesn't happen often, so I'll take it away.
The tool sheds, why, why do we have to replace all the tool sheds?
So, and again, Mike, I'll, I'll start, and if you could jump in if I, if I misrepresent. So the, the tool sheds are, I'm not quite sure how old they are, but they are in disrepair. We have rotten floors, ceilings, roofs, roofs that are leaking, they've, they're, they need to be replaced in order to, for us to adequately store materials and equipment. In, in the question you had sent me online, you had said, you know, why not one or two big, larger storage places as opposed to, to, to having smaller ones? The, the primary reason for that is because of the fact that the tool sheds are spread out. Like, we're looking to replace ones that currently exist at athletic fields, adjacent to the high school fields. We're looking to actually add one to the athletic field that's adjacent to the middle school baseball.
Correct.
Middle school baseball or softball. And, and so because of the fact, if we had one or two larger ones that were more centralized, then you would incur challenges like, well, how are you going to get things moved from point A to point B when you need them? The district is already committed to invest in mats for our, our track and field program. Well, if we don't get these storage sheds, we're not going to have places to store those mats, and then they're going to deteriorate at a faster rate. So it, it is, it is a big investment, I, to your, to your question that you would ask me via email, but they are, they are necessary for us to make sure that if we're investing in this equipment, or if we have invested in equipment, that we are adequately protecting it from the elements when they're not being used.
So our current net favorable position is about $84,000?
Correct.
Does this...
It was not removed from there, so we would have to deduct that.
Yeah, so it would be more like $400,000. Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't worry.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, if there's any other questions, I can try to answer them.
Okay, do I have a motion to transfer $341,871 as presented in enclosure 10.3 to fund the cost of identified one-time purchases? So move. Second? Let me scroll second. Thank you. Second, Mike Chan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Or abstained? Ask unanimous. Like 10.4?
10.4? I will turn it over to the speaker.
All right, so this is our annual healthy food certification. This is the one motion that needs to be read ad verbatim. So what you see, you have to read. So basically, this is where the state of Connecticut gives us additional funds to ensure that, that we're following healthy food and Connecticut nutritional standards as, for snacks or any other items that are not sold as part of the reimbursable breakfast or lunch that the students are eating. And then that would be the first one that the board would like us to part, continue participating. The second one would be to exempt us from after-hour sales, so half an hour after the close of school at the location of the event, we are able to sell non-healthy food.
Do the kids actually want?
So, does anyone have any questions?
Do we have to do these separately?
Yes, so you have to do one at a time, so.
I'll move it pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 215F. The regional school district eight board of ed certifies that all food items offered for sale to its students in the school, under its jurisdictions, not exempt from the Connecticut national nutritional standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education, will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standard during the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. This certification shall include all the food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Do I hear a second? Second? Second, Drew Goffin? Any discussion? Will you take a vote? Vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstained? Unanimous? What else? Turn.
I'll do the second one. Entertain a motion that the regional school district eight board of education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section 10-221Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of this official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Mike Bullier? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous, and we will start with the first read of policy.
Well, before, before we do that, I did want to make a comment that I noticed in the student, the school climate survey, that a number of students in the high school complained about the lack of junk food, if you will. So you might want to communicate to the school body that we aren't limiting in that regard because of this.
I'm blaming you.
Yeah, yeah. I'm the school lawyer.
I just voted for this.
from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Do I hear a second? Second. Second, Drew Goffin. Any discussion? Will take a vote. Vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstained? Unanimous?
What else is turning?
I'll do the second one. Entertain a motion that the Regional School District Eight Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in Section ten dash two twenty-one Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of this official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Mike Bullier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous, and we will start with the first read of policies.
Well, before we do that, I did want to make a comment that I noticed in the student, the school climate survey, that a number of students in the high school complained about the lack of junk food, if you will. So you might want to communicate to the school body that we aren't limiting in that regard because of this.
I'm blaming you.
Yeah, yeah. I'm the school.
You just voted for this policy.
Yeah, right. Blame the school board.
I am.
Throw us right under the bus that we did this in order that they can eat, right?
So I'll jump right in to the first read of different policies. The first policy is a consideration for revision. It's policy number fourteen twenty-four, which is fundraising. Board members may remember, actually, that we just had updated this policy back in April of twenty twenty-four. However, I had brought forward a policy, a separate policy to the board subcommittee to consider for, to consider for deletion, and it is simply, it's a policy that called solicitation of funds. And the last really wording of that policy said, there shall be no solicitation of funds from students in the school except for school-specific activities. When I brought it forward for deletion to the policy subcommittee, the thought was, well, they felt it was an important, I don't want to mischaracterize this, but that it was an important thing to keep in our policy book. So instead of having a standalone, separate policy on that particular item, it fit really well on the fundraising. So we're just simply updating our fundraising policy to incorporate that language. Any questions about that? All right, so fourteen ten is community use of facilities. This is the one that I had actually just discussed based off of the question that Drew asked about the, or sorry, the question that Joe had asked about facilities rentals. We did update this to align with legislative changes that did come into play and made those changes. And then also, we did update, as I said, the schedule of fees and the application process. The application process that was actually in our policy book was outdated, antiquated. It had people who identified in there that haven't worked in the district probably in ten or fifteen years. So we obviously utilize technology to do that, and again, the updated fee schedule is there as well. Any questions about that particularly? All right, the next one is bylaw nine one three five, which is role of board and members. There actually was a standalone policy that was, I believe it was called, well, it's going to be coming up here later for deletions. It was called public complaints, or it is called public complaints. And it was just a standalone policy that talked about how the board should respond if complaints are brought to the attention of the board, which, of course, doesn't happen. But what we decided to do was-
That was a joke.
Yes. What we decided to do was, instead of deleting that policy, which technically isn't necessary, we added that, the language at the end of this policy of response to public concern, and it highlights kind of how, when concerns are brought to the attention of either the board or the administration, that we try and deal with them at the lowest level and how we address those issues of concern. So we're essentially memorializing the process that actually already exists, and this will enable us to delete that other policy, which we'll get to later on. The next one is policy six one four five, interscholastic athletics. This is a policy that is not mandated by any type of legislation, so I had brought it to the policy subcommittee to consider for deletion. The feedback that I received at the policy subcommittee was that the members of the subcommittee felt that it was important to have this. It kind of states the board's position and philosophy and beliefs about the importance of interscholastics, interscholastic athletics, and said, no, they felt that this was a policy that was worth keeping. So it was a much longer policy, but what we did was, we really, I worked collaboratively with the intrudor athletic director, and we took it from, I think, a two- or three-page policy that had two or three pages of regulations associated with it, and we just made it into a single one-page policy that really captures the essence of our thoughts and beliefs about interscholastic activities. And I brought it back to the policy subcommittee for a second, for a second review, and everybody was satisfied with it, so bring the floor to you. Any questions about that one? So the next one is fourteen twenty-three. This is for, to consider for deletion. This is the one that I've mentioned before. This one-sentence policy is now a part of our fundraising policy, so it can be deleted. The next one is fifty-one twenty-three, student progress. It is, it is not required legislatively that we have this policy in no way, shape, or form by suggesting that we stop informing parents about how students are progressing, and we will still do report cards. But really, this, with the advent of Power School and all of the ability that families have, obviously, to have access really in a real-time period to access their students' grades and see how their kids are doing, you know, obviously, to be honest with you, Power School and having that ability to do is just as if not more important than report cards. So we will still, obviously, provide report cards. We're still going to provide transcripts, but just as a way of practicality, this is an unnecessary policy because we have a process in place.
Power School updates every night at midnight. I know that because I hear it.
When my son was in high school, he hated Power School because I got it on it every day, probably at twelve oh one, to see what he had not done that day. It was a lot. So the next one is policy six thousand, school district goals. This, I'm certainly not suggesting eliminating the desire to have identified goals as a school district, but we already actually have a policy under community, which is in the one thousand section, that addresses this particular topic that we have, that the board identifies goals. And so this is just redundant and unnecessary, and I'm recommending deletion because it's found elsewhere already in our policy book. The next one is bylaw nine four zero five, board member electronic meeting participation at Board of Ed meetings. This is a, an outdated policy because we actually updated bylaw nine three one four, probably last year or the year before, which is called, the title of that one is called meeting conduct. And actually, that policy covers how board members can participate in board meetings electronically. So again, it's just a redundant policy because it's covered elsewhere. And for that same exact reason, I am recommending the deletion of policy nine four one zero, which is board member electronic meeting participation at subcommittee meetings, because, again, it's covered under that one meeting conduct policy. The next one is bylaw nine four three five, which is Board of Education hearings. This is a one- or two-sentence policy that is simply restating what is legislatively required for board hearings, and so it's unnecessary, so I'm recommending deletion of that particular one. The next one is policy one four one two, schedule of fees. As I mentioned earlier, with revising the school use of facilities policy, instead of having one that was about school use of, school use facilities, and then a separate one altogether about schedule of fees for use of board facilities, it made sense to combine the two, trying to be as efficient as we possibly can. So this policy obviously can be eliminated as well. And then I think the last one, thank goodness, is public complaints. And as I indicated earlier, this one simply falls under the revised policy of, I think it's all of board members. We added the language about how board deals with public complaints or public concerns in a different policy, so we can delete this one. That's why I wouldn't got a thing of water, because I knew I was going to be talking about that. That concludes, that concludes my policy recommendations. But certainly, myself, or Drew, and Scott, and Gabe, and Carrie online can answer any questions to keep in mind. Good?
I'm starting to get time for a countdown now. How many policies left?
A lot less. A lot, a lot less than a year ago, I'll tell you. We're getting close. We're chipping away. We're chipping away. Give the financials.
All right, we'll go to Eva with the financials.
All right, so ten point six K in your handout, in your packet. I'm projecting a net favorable position of eight hundred three thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars at the end of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. On, on or about March fifth, the governor and/or the legislative bodies reached an agreement that increased this current fiscal year's excess cost funding, and we shall be receiving more information on that. So hopefully, by next month, I will have an update on that. The capital improvement fund, we still have the middle school baseball field ADA project, the bids, the bid was posted in the newspaper and everywhere that we needed to post it. We're hoping to get submittals by April, on April second for opening and review. And again, as a reminder, the capital non-recurring fund is no longer a part of this. We are now called the Reserve for General Education Fund. And the one thing that is left open in that is the material containment center, and we are hoping that there should be a meeting between ourselves and the town representatives to move that to the next step, hopefully. And then again, the people services department keeps reviewing their purchases, the purchase orders based on the individual education plan for their students, and either opening, adjusting, or closing purchase orders accordingly. Are there any questions that the board may have at this time?
Yeah, I just thought of one. Excess costs for this year have been up, but there's significant cuts from next year.
So the goal is to try to keep it, the momentum going forward, but on Wednesday is the educational committee, and they're talking about ECS, the educational cost share. They're not, so they're not, so they're not really highlighting excess costs, and we don't get ECS, the towns get our ECS funded, so.
So I think, if I'm hearing your question correctly, they gave us the additional forty million dollars for this year. Great news. We have no idea how much we're going to get, so we're just, it's a waiting game. We also don't know how much money is going to be allocated for next year, and so-
So I was very conservative, and I budgeted at sixty percent, because in the past, I'd done seventy percent, and we'll get, nearly close to that. So this year, I fit the bullet and said sixty percent was what I was budgeting.
So we, that's in our budget as anticipated revenue. Obviously, we're hoping we get at least the sixty percent. We need a little bit more, but, you know, we didn't change the anticipated revenue. It just, it's, what I've been told in meetings that I've been to is that we should anticipate getting some additional, like, as Eva just said, I think, really adequately and properly is the momentum to continue forward. But there's still a great unknown, and so our feeling is be conservative and hope for more funding.
Any additional questions? All right, so moving on to ten point six B is the food service monthly sales and expenditure report. So at this time, at the end of February twenty eighth, the program is currently running at a loss of fifty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. However, the positive news of this was that it's twenty-two thousand dollars less than last year, so we made a correction. We're going in the right direction. Are there any questions that the board may have on that?
Thank you for including that.
No worries.
It's a good reference, too.
I thought, when I looked at the number from last year, I'm like, oh, that's a positive. Got to share positive news. All right, ten point six C, the student activity reports for the high school and middle school are in balance with Webster Bank, our bank. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? So hearing none. Ten point six D is the short-term investment fund account. At the end of February, we reinvested the dividend of one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? All right, so the last item of this portion is the budget appropriation transfers that stemmed from January and February. So there are twenty-three journal entries. These twenty-three journal entries totaled one hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents. They went from, for various items, we had an unanticipated, unanticipated insurance claim, so that we have a deductible of five thousand dollars. The athletic director noticed that he needed additional soccer uniforms. Oh, there was, so we, unfortunately, this one caught us off-guard a little bit, the two thousand fifty-five dollars. There's actually, we had to do an upgrade for software that the facilities department uses, and unfortunately, now there's an annual fee included. The annual fee was two thousand fifty-five dollars, so we can budget for it. Next year, this year, we didn't know about it, so we had to do a transfer for it. The rest is basically, you know, just price increases, things that the middle school themselves found a new tool to enable parent conferences scheduling for it, that makes it a smoother transition, so it was a hundred sixty dollars, so we did it. We said yes, okay. So now that we said yes, okay, I'm hoping that the board says yes, okay. So are there any additional questions that the board may have?
I have one.
Okay.
I noticed multiple personnel transfers per February. Why are they broken out individually?
So I usually do them after every payroll, so you'd usually get two to three a month based on that. The last one was, I was freeing up, so we had a lot of personnel shifts, and so people will also jump on or off our insurance from time to time. So I did a, I had the director of accounting review what might be free, you know, just sitting around, spoken for when it's really not spoken for, so I freed up that money to go into the unallocated personnel.
Thank you.
Yep.
So this is just transfers between accounts? This is not additional spending anywhere?
Yep.
Right? I mean, I could see that in the personnel.
Yeah.
I move that we approve these transfers in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand dollars, six hundred seventy-eight, thousand six hundred seventy-eight, thousand seventy cents.
Second, Drew Goffin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Thank you. So ten seven, it was what you guys voted on, which is your addition to the agenda. So basically, what this is, is currently, we have a food service management company that handles our food service program. Marlboro also has a food service management company that handles their food service program. We are, we go out to bid every five years, so even four shorter, depending on how things are going for you. So it's, you go into, you enter into a one-year contract that renews annually for up to five years. So at this time, it made sense for both Marlboro Elementary, the Marlboro Public Schools, and ourselves to see if an interschool agreement made sense in totality for us. So based on the discussions that we were having, we came up with some benefits that I outlined in this memo, so that the board can see the value of us joining forces. So basically, what would happen is the contractor of the food service program would fall under Ram's offices, so we would take care of their food service program through the food service management company. So it would just take, from our perspective, there'd be one determining official, which we have. A determining official is the person who has access to the state site, who can see if they're Medicaid-free or reduced students, and then that information gets put into our student information database system, Power School. So then, this person from our end would then communicate with a point person at Marlboro Elementary to let them know who their people are. I personally would have to go out three times a year to make sure that the food service management company at that site is doing what they're supposed to be doing. We are seen as two sites here, because we have a middle school and a high school in the world, and one big building, and then the elementary would be a third site. So it would just be, we'd be treated as a normal, regular K-12 district, basically, as well.
Have we done this before?
We have not.
No? Okay.
Would it make sense to drink any, or even?
So it's a great, it's a great question. So I'll give context for kind of how this evolved. I meet monthly with the superintendents from the three elementary districts, and I will tell you that every single time that we meet, we talk about a litany of things, but within the context of almost every conversation we have, we talk about needs that we might have that might be able to, we might be able to partner with one of our other districts, one or more of our other districts, whether it's a staffing issue, like, hey, I need a, you know, an elementary superintendent might say, I need a point four music teacher, you know, is there any, you know, college, you have somebody who is working less than one point OFT, you know, so, you know, those are types of conversations that happen on a fairly- You know, so, you know, those are types of conversations that happen on a fairly regular basis. We um, you know, we 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 are trying to partner with them and collaborate with them on on things like instructional, curriculum and instruction initiatives, right? And so Mary Rose Mead, our new um uh curriculum director, is is, you know, working closely with them around, here's some initiatives that we have going on. Talk, the more that we can partner with our feeder districts, I think it it's more advantageous. It just builds a more unified region. And so this, this interschool agreement came out of one of those meetings, and the superintendent from Marlboro said, you know, hey, listen, I've got to go out to bid. You know, where are you guys at? And 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 I said, well, you know, ironically, we're we're going out to bid, too. So we just started talking about the possibility of this partnership. We did talk with the other um superintendents from the other districts. I will, uh basically, what I was told uh from from the Andover superintendent is, Andover is currently partnered, actually, in a, in a, in the exact same type of agreement, but they're they're with Coventry. They've been with Coventry for years. And um and I don't fault the 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 superintendent there. Basically, her, the impression I got was, we're really happy with what we have, and I'm not looking to make any substantive changes at this point. Totally understand that. Hebron is is in a similar situation. They are actually sub, uh there's two different ways to do food service. You can either be, do it yourself and 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 have your own employees, or you can do food service, is what we do. Hebron is currently um doing uh their their own thing. They have their own employees. They they manage their own kitchen. And I was told, at this point, we're not really looking to make any changes. So the offer to do the interschool agreement with other districts was offered. I don't think that the door is permanently closed on that. I think it's one of those things where, you know, this partnership that we make with Marlboro, that, you know, how how good it goes could could maybe have some influence over over future partnerships with with some of our elementary districts. But again, I I see this as a really good thing. It just built a more cohesive and aligned regional district, which is what we're looking to do at every opportunity, right? And so there is a recommended motion, I would certainly take questions, but there was a recommended motion. So the the process is, moving forward, is uh the board would need to authorize me to do two things, to to negotiate the terms of the interschool agreement, which is something that I would do with uh the, even I would do with the leadership of 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 the Marlboro School District. And then ultimately, once the terms of the agreement are negotiated, um it would be entering into the agreement. And so um Marlboro has has not had this conversation yet with their board. I think their board meeting is the end of it, 27, 28, somewhere around there, thank you. So that this is a conversation that is going to be had at the Marlboro Board of Education to to move in this direction as well. You know, the the leadership over there anticipates, you know, their board being supportive of it. The timing worked out that we had this meeting last Thursday after our agenda had been posted. And when I said, well, I got to get this into our board, the timing's perfect, so, which is why we had to add it to the agenda for for today. But, you know, if there's any questions, we can certainly do our best to answer them. But if not, there's the recommended motion that I provided to you all.
I would just note that there's 1162.
Did I do that quickly?
1162 students, which means it's 22.
I I did the memo really quickly.
This, this was at the witching hour on Thursday afternoon. We were like, we got to get this out, so.
Thank you.
Better economy of style.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll make a motion to authorize the superintendent to negotiate the terms of, enter into, a food service interschool agreement with Marlboro Public School.
I was like, perfect, thank you. Um any discussion?
How does the finances network? Do we pay it, they pay us, or?
So all the, so the sales of the food become ours because it is our program. But we have to help maintain the support, so it, so that's part of the negotiation in terms of if there's capital improvements, who might be paying for that? Is it coming out directly from the food service account? If there's not enough in the food service account, what portion, what share, all of that needs to get negotiated.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you. You all. So that brings us to committee reports.
Hi. We'll get us started. We had a joint facilities and finance subcommittee meeting on March 11th, where we discussed a number of topics that we've gone through on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting is scheduled, or will be scheduled, for April 8th. We'll see if that turns into a joint meeting or not. Depends on our needs. Over to that.
Thank you. Finance, Drew, anything?
What he said. It was a joint meeting. And our next meeting is the same.
Policy, Carrie?
All right, I couldn't get off mute there. Uh, policy, we're just continually going through the different policies for um revision and deletion. Does anybody else have anything to add on that?
Oh, no. Heard the difference in our late.
Um, program and communication.
We have not met. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for April 2nd.
And Carrie, anything from Cabe?
No, nothing new from Cabe either.
And then next, we have informational items.
Yeah, so uh in your packet is enclosure 12.1A and 12.1B. I'll just highlight a few of the things that that we have going on. We have uh, actually, tomorrow, we've got some senior portfolio presentations that are happening at the high school. I'm excited about that. I've got the schedule, and I'm planning to attend and some of those. We have a professional development day at the end of this week on Friday. That's obviously district-wide. Going into April, we have our spring concert coming up for the high school. And one of the things that I always enjoy, too, is there's a career day for um on April 11th. And um our school counseling staff, one of our counselors in particular, puts together a career day for um our our sophomore students. You know, they do a really good job of um, you know, trying to ascertain um particular careers that students are interested in learning more about. And then they go out and see people from uh within the community and even outside of the community to come in and speak to our students. I went last year, and it was a great event, and uh I'm excited about this year's, this year as well. As a couple of our student uh student reps mentioned, uh we're in a different type of March Madness here at Ram in the sense of lots of testing going on. Students, students certainly love all that happening. We have NWEA testing actually at the, that is taking place. That's our um sixth-grade students that are going to come into us. They will take some tests that gives us some baseline data that we utilize at the middle school. Dr. Shurucene's, his staff at seventh grade use to to identify, um, you know, where students need to be and 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 how to make sure that we can um work with them well. One of our students mentioned the SEMA Eastern Regional Music Festival being held at Coventry um later this month as well. As I said, it's it's hard to believe we're, it's spring already, like, I think Thursday's the first day of spring. I think the week after that, or two weeks from now, it's the beginning of the fourth marking period. I don't know how the year went by this quick, but it did. I I will mention something about the middle school um calendar events that I would really encourage board members, if you haven't had the chance to do it, is the Music and Arts Coffee House at the middle school. I think that is the, it's the 10th. It's from six to six to eight. It's actually held at the high school, because we use the um, we use the cafeteria in the atrium. It's very similar to the Evening in the Arts, but it's specifically for the middle school. It's a great event. If you've never had, if you've never gone, I would highly encourage you to go. Just highlighting the the phenomenal talents of our of our side in performing arts students. And I, and then uh it's later on in April, but we do have an all-town jazz concert. Again, it's a really neat event to go to. It's certainly not just specific to the middle school. It's um uh bands from our three feeder districts come. Sometimes we've had bands from like Bacon Academy come over and and perform with us. We actually have um performers who are not in school, who who will come. We have, you know, jazz musicians who live, live in the community, come and and perform with our students. And it's just a really, really great event um that that I would encourage people to try to come to if if they've never had the opportunity to do it. That, that concludes my events. I, I'll roll right into student discipline. I, you know, enclosure 12.2A and 12.2B, identify the in and out of school suspensions for uh the high school and the middle school over the past month. Data is in front of you. That's, that concludes everything for me.
Perfect, thank you. Um, next, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Give marks.
Second? All right, thanks, Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you, everyone.